Okay, guys, let's start the meeting. I'd like to call the Town of Tewksbury zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Today is October 29, 2024. And the first meeting on the -- the first item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from July 25, 2024.
Let me see. You were here, right? Okay, so I'll move them.
I have the time.
I'll move them. Motion to move, approve the meetings. Okay, she says we have to approve the meetings of the 25th, right?
Yeah, July 25th.
All right, so I'll move the -- approve the meetings of the 25th. Second light, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is an extension request for 913 East Street. What it says, probably moving, don't know when it's extended for.
Hi. Dick Cuco here, representing Woodland Design for the applicant, 911, 913.
913 East Street, yep.
We are here, we have a variance for a really odd setback last year. You remember that building that's on the track?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
So what happened is one of the tenants had moved out and the second tenant, whose lease doesn't expire until the end of the year, hasn't found a new location yet. And the owner, you know, he's been a good tenant, so the owner didn't want to force him out. He's a local business guy.
Yep.
So he's helping him try to find another location for his business. So the variance would have run out at the end of the month. So we're in here for a six-month extension so that we can accommodate that tenant.
So six months would be, what, maybe October?
I think it expires on September 28, so.
February would be six months. February of 2025 would be six months.
Yeah.
So we're looking to extend this.
I believe that, I don't, I think.
It says 28th of September, right?
Yeah, 28th of September is when it expires.
But we could extend it until February.
So it would be March.
What, March?
Of, March 28th of 2025.
You're right, sorry. Well, what's the actual date? What was it, the last Friday, the last Thursday of every month?
Just add six months, George.
Yeah, just say six months from six months. Yeah, we'll just do that. Somebody want to make a motion then to extend this out for six months?
I'm making a motion to grant the extension for six months for 913 East Street to March 28, 2025.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set.
Okay, great, thanks so much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Correction on the paper, real quick. It says September 28, 2023. That's supposed to be September 28, 2024.
That's what I gave it to him. Good for you.
Good for you.
It goes till '24.
Yeah, it says it here next, just keep reading on, it says.
Got you.
Yeah, it's good. Okay, next item on the agenda is Michael Whitehouse for variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for frontage to construct a single-family home as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 45 Pine Street, assessors map 45, lot 54, zoned residential.
Thank you. For the record, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design. And with me here this evening is the Whitehouse family and the newest member. The property, let me fast forward here a little bit. The property is, the Whitehouse property, the Whitehouse has been in Tewksbury since the 1800s. So they had, the piece of property that they own currently is outlined in this area here. And so this was the family homestead. So what we're proposing to do is to subdivide off the family homestead and put in a new single-family dwelling for Mike and his family. When Donovan Way was originally permitted, they actually purchased some land from Mr. and Mrs. Whitehouse in order to maximize the development of what was Donovan Drive. And part of that was to leave a stub in this area so that we have access into this property. That was in the early 90s, I guess. So the idea at the time was that the road would be extended and there'd be two lots back there. These areas that are in red were isolated land subject to flooding back in the 90s, and they weren't jurisdictional. Fast forward to 2024, and they are now no longer isolated, well, they're still isolated land subject to flooding, but they're also now jurisdictional under the local wetland bylaw. So we would not be able to get this second home in this area. So it's like, all right, well, it doesn't make sense for the environment and for the neighborhood and for the town of Tewksbury to extend this roadway in for one house lot. So we are proposing to have the, we have 55 feet of frontage. Forget a variance of frontage, we meet the area requirements, we meet the setback requirements, we meet the lot with requirements, and there would just be a private driveway coming in to service this home. The town would not be responsible for another 180 feet of roadway, and there wouldn't be any additional need for, you know, extensive drainage. The house that's, and we definitely have to go to conservation on this regardless, so just wanted to get that out of the way right away. Tewksbury has a regulation, and the new regulation that they put in, in 2012 or somewhere around there, where you cannot sheet any driveway flow out into a public right-of-way. So this is a public right-of-way. So you've probably noticed on some of the new homes that you've seen around town that sometimes they have a grate across the driveway with a drain. In this case, the land drops off, it's a little lower down in this area. So what we're proposing is we'd have the driveway pitch back in this direction, and we'd put in a treatment swale along here to handle any new runoff that would be coming from this driveway. You also need to get, you can no longer just cut in a driveway, you have to get a physical alteration permit. And when you go to get the physical alteration permit, you have to show the town engineer that you can do this, and they have to approve it before they give you the physical alteration permit prior to even getting your building permit. So if you were inclined to grant the variance, that would just be the first step. We would then have to go to conservation. After going to conservation, we'd have to go to the DPW and get a physical alteration permit to open up the street, to extend the sewer.
Right.
And all the utilities. So that's the sub, pretty much the substance of it. The parcel that's remaining is 2.0, 3. something acres, and this is 2. something acres. So out of the five-and-a-half acre parcel, we're still only having two lots.
Okay.
To try to answer any questions they might have.
Are the lots already subdivided?
No.
They're not?
No, no.
That's still in the works?
Well, it has to be, it has to go through our board first before we can go to subdivision. And just, oh yeah, just because I know you always like to see this. This is, this would be the home that they're constructing. It's similar to one of the houses on Terramora Drive. So I went over to Terramora Drive and took a picture of the house and brought it in because I know you always like to see that it's in keeping with the neighborhood. I did do a, I did, I believe on page four, I have the proposed findings for you.
Is the house going to sit on all of Lot B, or are you looking to divide that three and a half?
No, no, it'll be, it'll be all of Lot B. It'll be like three and a half.
3.67 acres?
Yeah.
Big lot.
Well, that's, you know, I'm pretty sure they would have subdivided it back in the 90s, but.
Not today.
It is what it is.
Yep. And what was the lot that would have had the other house, Lot C?
Yes.
And that one's unbuildable now?
Yeah, that can't be done.
Okay. 180-foot driveway?
Uh, no, no. If we had to put in the new cul-de-sac, it would have been, it would have been 180 feet.
How long's the driveway going to be?
The driveway's probably 60 feet, maybe.
I must have misunderstood.
Forty feet.
55, 233?
Yeah, the back is 35, it's probably about 50 feet. The, Mr. Dugan, the thing I was referencing in there was if we had to build that new roadway, it would be a hundred, additional 180 feet of road. And most likely, what's happened in the past is the DPW has asked us to remove the cul-de-sac so that they don't have two cul-de-sacs. So if we had to build that road, I got another slide that isn't in your packet, but basically we'd, if you look, you can see it here. What they did up on, like on Babbitt's Road and a couple others, that they wanted the circle taken out and then the road pushed through with a new circle, and so that they, it's easier for them to plow and whatever. It just seems as though that is awful waste of land and resources, and the town would have to maintain it, just the same thing to get the single, same single-family home.
There's not a lot of room there either.
No.
Fair enough.
It works, though, as long as we can get a fire truck around it.
Well.
Yeah.
It's my street. And the restoration project is the curb cut. The restoration project, how about the curb cut, cut into?
Yeah, we, that would be part of the physical alteration permit. We'd have to, yeah. The curbing in there is, it's beat up.
It's just tied, it's just.
Yeah. It was, it was back in the day when, you know, they had this sloped granite curbing, and it's kind of, the main part of the road is bituminous, but when you get to the circle, it's sloped granite, and it's all falling backwards. They did it, they really didn't do a very good job when they put the sewer in, putting everything back the way it was from before, so.
Do you guys have questions?
but because.
Yeah.
I do not.
The Whitehouse sold the builder some of that land, that was the trade-off, so that
Dan?
I do not.
we could extend the road up and through there.
Actually, I have one question.
All right, the three voting members will be myself, Rob, and Mike on this one.
Where are they measuring the 55-foot frontage? Why isn't all the rest of the 319 on the left, 7193 on the right?
Okay?
Where are they measuring to get that 55-foot of frontage?
It being a public hearing, if anybody has anything they want to add, please step up
If you look on, it's, there's the 55 feet right there from the recorded plan.
to the podium and name and address for the board. Please.
So it's just the end of the road?
My name is James Bailey, of the 35 Donovan Way.
Yeah.
Why isn't the rest of this included?
Well, because that's the side yard for this lot, it's not frontage.
Hi.
Hi. I have some concerns.
So the frontage is only right there.
The house isn't here, right?
Yeah.
Part of it was addressed, although I'm not quite sure whether we solved the issue.
So is this his property?
Yes. But that's the part that's being subdivided off.
That faces on Pine Street, right?
But first thing I'd like to ask the board is, why is there a reason for 150 feet of
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. So what actually touches Donovan Way is the 55 inch change.
frontage? Does the board know?
It's not 150 feet, it's 55 feet.
No, I know, that's what they want. I'm saying, I have 150, my neighbors have 150, the zoning law looks for 150, so why down to 50? I'm just, I'm genuinely curious, I do not know the answer. Somebody made a determination that there should be 150 feet of frontage for us.
Well, that's what the appeals are about, they're appealing.
Yeah, that's.
That's what the appeals are about.
I'm sorry?
That's what you're appealing it.
I would imagine that the 150 feet of frontage is to just give some space between the houses.
Right.
But I would believe that was the.
The goal.
Flavor of the ordinance, if you will.
Okay, just to have more space between.
That's, that's my feeling of it, it's.
Okay. All right, so I would look at that and say, well then, is that, the space between my property and that house then should have that 150 feet of frontage. So for the board to consider. The other thing I'm concerned about is, and this gentleman here, I don't, sure, if I may search your name?
Dick Cuco.
Designer?
No. No, not at all.
You'll have to address the board if you have any questions. You can't, no, it's fine.
The gentleman that was explaining the situation.
Yeah, no, understood, I understand, that's fine.
He alluded a little bit to it, and my big concern is that particular cul-de-sac has two drains at the end, which will be either situated directly in front of that driveway, or maybe one drain to the side. Purpose of those drains, my understanding, is it's a, built basically for runoff in the street.
Right.
But as you see that line that runs along my property, that's basically a, goes to a retention pond that's supposed to exist, which doesn't, for 100-year storm for runoff, which the year I bought the house, we had 100-year storm, and that pit filled entirely.
Right, right.
So whatever reasons, the state creates rules and then doesn't give the money to maintain them, that retention pit no longer exists. It's pine trees, woods, and forests. So I'm hoping I'm not around for the next 100-year storm because it may take out that whole area flooding-wise. I don't know if it will or won't. So I'm a little concerned about the runoff. This gentleman alluded to making it run into the wetland area instead of down into the street.
Yep.
You know, and again, I'd be looking at, well, is that a for-sure thing? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know if it's the cart before the horse, if you grant this and then it doesn't get accomplished, is there a way for me to go back and then say, hey, they didn't do what they were supposed to do? So I don't know if that would be a situation.
They need to get approved here before they go anywhere else. And they still need to get approvals from other boards as well, like the Conservation Committee alone is another that they would need to address. So that's where that would be.
So part of the issue that was created when he alluded to the installation of the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
So what they did was they didn't cut the road down, and they came in and they put another layer of tar over it. We had beautiful curbing, curbing probably eight inches high, it was gorgeous, and then they came in and destroyed it. I have pictures to illustrate or to show this if you're, if you're curious and you'd like to see them. So they also don't maintain those storm drains.
Right.
For 20 years I've lived there, I do it. I go out and I clean that rotary, and I take off, and again, I have pictures, I can show you how it exists right now. You couldn't get any water through there. I used to have to take the back end of a shovel and stick it through each individual hole to clear those storm drains. So I have a concern with that. They also came by, and what they did was to solve the issue, because the driveway slopes into the road, since they built the road up, they now trapped water into our driveway. So they came by and they put up a hump at the end of everybody's driveway, which of course just trapped all the water behind. My driveway now has two huge cracks going through it, and just about every winter you can set up a skating rink at the end of my driveway. So that's, and I say this only to illustrate that I'm very concerned about the drainage in that area.
Right.
I think it has a direct effect on my, my property and how it's maintained. So I don't know what assurances I can get that this would not impact my property in that, in that way. So those are basically my concerns. I don't know, you know, the exact position of the house, or those other things that may or may not affect the property value, that type of thing. I don't know how that works or how it equates. You know, my house, the one across the street, the one directly next to me, our big houses that command a lot of money, and the house that the Whitehouse is going to build, a very nice house, but not quite to that level, so I don't know if that affects or doesn't affect. I don't know how you arrive at that, you know, conclusion. I don't know whether the Realtors have looked at, I don't know. These are my concerns. I'm not, you know, we're getting older, I'm looking at downsides, I'm going to have to sell soon, so I am concerned about any impacts on those lines. So anyway, those are my concerns, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I could just.
Sure.
Inform Mr. Bailey of, for a couple items.
Sure, yes.
So the, if the variance is granted, the next process would be to go to the planning board to subdivide it, then the following process would be the Conservation Commission. At that time, all the butters will get notified again, that's public hearing, Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission looks at drainage, wildlife, quality of the runoff, where the runoff's going. They have a peer reviewer, who is another engineer, that comes in and reviews the process. And so that is just so that, just so that, it's a good question that Mr. Bailey asked, so I just thought if it was okay with you, Matt, that I was able to expound that. I think there's a, the bigger problem here is that, and we hear this all over town, is that the town accepted the road, they accepted the detention basin, they don't accept the responsibility. If this is a new subdivision, we have to have a homeowners' association. But people are paying tax money, they don't deserve to have the situation that they're living with, so. And thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board? Okay. Board members, do you have any other questions?
I have one more question. So you keep talking about subdividing it, maybe I, maybe I missed this part. What exactly are we subdividing? Is it Lot B and C?
A and B.
A and B.
A and B.
Yeah. C is no longer, that's.
So C is gone.
Gone. So it's just A, and everything else is B.
And the houses that are shown on Lot A?
Yeah, that was just an example of what was done in the 90s, so.
Yep.
So the one you need to look at is this one right here.
The other one?
Right, I understand that. I believe that's the one I am.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I couldn't see which one.
There's one left.
I don't like this room. I don't like this.
Sorry about that.
I like the other room.
Yeah, so just the answer, yeah.
And you are going to, Lot B will consist of 3.67 acres.
Correct.
After it's divided.
That's correct.
Okay. And it's going to be a 60-ish foot driveway?
Roughly, yeah.
Sloped towards the house?
Sloped away from Donovan Way.
Sloped towards the house.
Right.
Water, as I'm standing on Donovan Way, water is going to the right in that little cutout. You're going to have a swale built?
Yes.
So theoretically, if there's water gathering at the end of that, at the end of Donovan Way.
We may be having to take some of that.
You're going to take it.
Yeah. We're going to try to get the town to do it, but, you know, worst-case scenario, we're going to have to take it.
Yep. Which probably helped the neighbors.
Well, you know how that works, it's always the last guy in.
No comment.
That's the problem.
No comment.
I'm thinking, just, I'm showing a treatment swale. It could be that Conservation may want us to build a rain garden at the end of it, you know, for, you know, wildlife or whatever, but the minimum would be a grassy treatment swale.
One way or the other, you're going to take the water and manage it.
Right.
On that property.
We, like I said, by the new regulations, we can't put any water into the street anymore.
This was the visual that helped me more, because there's the houses that show it. This is where the proposed lot is.
Okay.
Any other questions, board members?
Why are you leaving the driveway short? Why aren't you trying to do the driveway as frontage, go 150-foot driveway?
Because we'd have to build a town road. We can't just, you know, we'd have to put a road in with 150 feet of frontage, and then you have to have a turnaround on there, and it's just really disruptive to the.
There's been, there's been properties in town that put 150-foot driveway in and called it frontage, not a road, driveway.
They probably have a paper subdivision, but we just, we just thought this would be the least disruptive.
Somebody want to make a motion to close?
I'll move to close both parts.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for variance under section 5.3.2 of the, for Michael Whitehouse of the Whitehouse, excuse me, of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw, and for frontage, construct a new single-family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 45 Pine Street, assessors map 5545, Lot 54, zoned residential.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, next on the docket is John Mercer for variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side setback and a special permit under section 8.1.1.C to alter a previously existing non-conforming structure in order to construct a 30-by-22.4 garage addition as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 4 Sharon Street, assessors map 82, Lot 52, zoned residential. That's a lot. John, please, please have a seat at the desk and name and address for the board, please, and talk a little bit about what you're trying to do.
Yep, John Mercer, 4 Sharon Street, Tewksbury. I'm just trying to put a two-spot tandem garage behind the existing garage. And the existing garage right now isn't conforming, I believe, it's only 9.8 or 9.5 feet setback, side setback, so I don't know what happened. That was before I owned the property. It's just, I got a lot of, you know, I got my son and daughter, they've got cars now, and there's just a lot of vehicles on the street, and I'm trying to take some of those off, and I have a couple of cars of my own that I'm trying to get in garage, and if possible, I'd like to, you know, try to extend the garage. I don't think Conservation has to get involved, I got a letter saying Conservation does.
Okay, next on the docket is John Mercer for variance under section five dot three dot two of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side setback and a special permit under section eight dot one dot one dot C to alter a previously existing non-conforming structure in order to construct a thirty by twenty-two dot four garage addition as shown on, on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at Four Sharon Street, assessors map eighty-two, lot fifty-two, zone residential. That's a lot. John, please, please have a seat at the desk and name and address for the board, please, and talk a little bit about what you're trying to do.
Yep, John Mercer, Four Sharon Street, Tewksbury. Um, I'm just trying to put a two-spot tandem garage behind the existing garage. Um, and the existing garage right now isn't conforming, I believe, it's only nine point eight, or nine point five feet setback, side setback, so I don't know what happened, that was before I owned the property. Um, it's just, I got a lot of, you know, I got my son and daughter, I've got cars now, and we, there's just a lot of vehicles on the street, and I'm trying to take some of those off, and I have a couple of cars of my own that I'm trying to get in garage, and if possible, I'd like to, you know, try to extend the garage. I don't think conservation has to get involved, I gotta let us in, conservation doesn't have to get notified.
So why do we need a variance and a special permit?
Existing non-conforming?
Existing.
Yes.
But it's not changing the old garage, you're not making any changes to the old garage?
Well, I am, the, the roof's gonna get raised like a foot because the garage that's going out back, I need some, a little bit more head height, and we're trying to keep the, the ridge of the roof the same height, so it looks existing. So the, the, the gable on the, the existing garage is gonna go up about a foot.
The three voting members, are you three gentlemen?
Yes.
Rob, Dan, and Mike for this one.
How close is the house to the property line, the edge of the house?
My, not the garage?
Not the garage.
So the house is on the left side, I, I.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your print.
Yeah.
I can't read the number in red.
So if the, so the back corner's nine feet, the garage is twenty-two feet, and there's a, it's gotta be forty feet, right around there?
Let me ask the question again.
Sure.
The corner of your house, that number right there in red.
Yep.
That I can't read.
Oh, okay, yes, that front, that's the corner of the garage, that's nine, nine foot, that's nine foot six, the existing right now, sorry. And it's, there's lots of funny shape against, the way they subdivided it, like, there's a lot of property out back that's.
They did that, they did that to make all the lots an acre.
Right.
Even if, even if it was just a little pie cut, it all added up to be an acre.
Correct. So the shape of the, the lot made it a little different.
Is your, is your existing garage, was that built with the house, or was that an addition somewhere along the line?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I actually asked the, the previous owner's mother, and I don't think she knew. They're actually my neighbors to the right.
You haven't been there long enough to know that.
No, it was, it's always been there.
As far as I know, it's always been there.
When was it built? When was the house built?
Sixty-five, I believe, is what was on the deed, if that sounds right, right around there. The deed's there, there's, um.
I just like to ask instead of flipping through all the papers.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was right around before I was born.
So you wanna add a thirty by twenty-four foot?
By twenty-two foot.
By twenty-two foot garage to the back of the existing garage?
Correct. And there's a shed back there, that's gonna come down.
It's gonna be, the sideline is gonna be the same?
Correct.
How are you gonna access it?
Through the front. And then the left side will have maybe like, uh, we're gonna put like a six-foot roll-up door for the, for the ride on mower, we're eliminating the shed.
When you say through the front?
The existing garage doors.
So you're gonna go through your existing garage doors, so you're basically just gonna make.
Yep.
A fifty-foot long garage?
Yes, so the two spots behind will be tandem for storage, basically, and, and like, you know, garage workspace.
Am I the only one who doesn't understand what you mean by tandem?
The spots are in front of each other.
He's gonna drive through the garage that exists right now to get to the back garage. You're not gonna drive around the house to get to the back.
When, when a spot's in front of each other and behind each other, that's called tandem.
Okay.
I, I work in South Boston doing this stuff, and that's what they call all the box.
There was a word the other week for a porch or something that I hadn't heard before either.
Really?
Yeah.
Did I miss that, word of the day?
Yeah, I think it was last week, I didn't know what it was.
That might not even be the correct word, I have no idea.
I like it. I like it, I know what it means now. All right, you're gonna have a six-foot roll-up on the back for your lawnmower?
Yeah, on the side.
On the side?
Yep.
Man door on it somewhere?
Yes.
But no, no garage doors?
No.
On the side or in the back?
No.
Just a smaller six-foot?
Yep. Yep, just access for the, the lawnmower.
Can you say you're just raising the roof of the existing garage a foot?
It, right around there, between a foot and two feet, say. It's just they need it because I'm putting a lift back there to work on my vehicle, and the existing height of the garage isn't enough to do that, and to have different heights of the gable, it's just not gonna look right.
I have no more questions.
Dan?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Being in public hearing, does anyone have anything they want to add? Please feel free, go up to the podium, name and address for the board, please.
Hi, Carol Markie, Six Sharon Street. I don't have a problem with this being built, I just wanted, I, I think a lot of my questions were answered, actually, because I was wondering about the height, which is fine, it was gonna be all, all the same.
Always addressed by the board, yeah.
Yes.
No, no, it's fine.
All right.
So, that's what, I, I wanted to make sure that it was all the same, that it wasn't like this was like here, and then the addition was gonna be high, like higher.
Right.
And my other question was like how they're gonna pull in and out, so they'll be pulling, my understanding, I just want to make sure I understand.
Through the existing spot now?
Right, so they won't have a back garage door on it, they'll just be pulling in and pulling out.
No, side for the lawnmower.
Right.
Tandem.
Tandem.
And, um, now what about the setback? How, like, does somebody come up and check all that, like, once it's built, like, how does that work?
The building.
The building, the department.
Department, well.
Okay. All right, that was it.
Wait, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Where is your house in relationship to this property?
I'm next door, so I'm on the side that he's.
She's the one that matters.
I'm, I'm, I'm the abutter.
How far is your house from your property line? Give or take?
I'm you, that's you. I don't know.
Probably at least fifty feet.
Okay. So it's not close?
No, nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Somebody'd like to make a motion?
To close the, uh.
Both.